The amount of sixty-six thousand, four dollars and fifteen cents.
Some move.
Okay, your large ones in there are the end demolition and asbestos.
Ministry.
Police equipment. Administrator transfer.
Twenty thousand.
For twenty thousand dollars. Those are your large ones there. All in favor? Aye. Mail. Hopefully we can get through this.
Glad to see it's so few.
Certificate of Highway Mileage, year ending February tenth, two thousand thirteen. If there are no changes in the mileage, check the box and the box has been checked. So I'll take a motion to have it signed.
Second.
All in favor?
Is that the same figure we had and we set?
Yes, same thing.
Class two, am I reading this right? Eleven?
No.
Eleven point eight five. Okay. Total seventy-six point four four six.
How many? We have to get you guys around and take care of. You still have to work on. It's all out there.
Okay, that takes mail. We'll bring the road foreman up to speed. Bring us up to speed, one or the other.
This downwind here because of mitigation of. Undersized culverts. Is that part of the? We have three, four, maybe even five. Maybe some kind of grant. We have two on Mount Anthony Road that are undersized.
He actually had one of those washed out pretty bad at one time.
Yeah, well, the ones that the water has gone over the road, yeah, there's two of them on Mount Anthony Road.
They had to fix them a couple of times?
Yes, three on one and two on the other, every one.
Good. Not good, but you have documentation that you fixed them.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Crossroad is, is one that is way undersized. It's never been over the road before, but. The only thing that actually saved that is the watershed above it. It's a south stream access and. Heat's bound, I guess you'd call it. The other one is on Northwest Hill Road, which the ends of that, it's an old boiler shell. It's been repaired a few times. But if that's, would help you out in the. Discussion you're gonna have when I leave, because I'm leaving here very shortly.
Have that discussion now. Is there, is there grants available for those sort of things that clearly can show? Where we continually had to repair them over time?
Yeah, basically, the hazard mitigation grants are designed to. Fix something so you don't have to keep fixing it. That's basically what you're saying with mitigation. So if you have a, a culvert that's too small and it keeps washing out. Basically, someone's paying for that, whether it's you guys or whether it's FEMA or whoever. If it can be sized so it doesn't wash out, it doesn't, it doesn't need as much maintenance, and that saves everybody lots of money. And that's, that's the idea. There, there are other things you can use those kinds of grants for, but for the, for most part, since flooding is a big issue. Those are one, one area that that can be, be funded. There's a, a hazard mitigation grant program. They're actually even. We're actually in, they're actually, state is actually in round four, so that was one of the main reasons I wanted to come is make sure you guys are, are getting all this stuff and hearing about this. You can apply for the, the grant and it can, can be used for that, and especially if you have documentation. They like to see it. They don't like to see, they like to see, they like documentation for at least three previous occurrences. Now, those, those go back to whenever, so if you, and, and you can. Do a lot of things to try to figure out that. If you have, if you have numbers, that's great. If you don't have numbers, if there's anything in the select board minutes. Or if someone says, well, we fixed it in nineteen fifty-six and we think it took two truckloads and you get, I mean FEMA will work with you. They're, they're actually not as bad as you think. They will, they will work with you to, to try to make this work. The thing is, is you need a hazard mitigation plan, and that you don't have. And that's where I come in. I can help you with that. I would need some, some of your time, probably some of your time, Linda's time, but we can do a lot of the work. You, there was a plan, but they're, they're basically good for five years and your plan has expired. So we would need to develop that. Now, the way it works is you can't get the money until the plan is approved, but you can apply for the money. So you can apply and get the grant approved. They may even say, yes, it's fine, but they won't give you a dime until that plan's approved. So your timeframe for applying is quick, I think.
February something.
Right? It's, it's pretty soon.
Eighteenth of this month.
Did you get this out, Linda, or do I need to? Does that mean copies of this?
Um, I gave the board, but.
Oh, so then we get it electronically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this, this was a notice that's sent out by the, by the state.
National.
January eighteenth.
Yeah, so you all have that in your mail while you're walking through. You have to write a letter of intent, I think, by. The whole thing has to be is, we plan on applying for money for three culverts and we think it will cost X. It doesn't have to be any detail. Later than you have to fill out an application.
Okay, but, but initial applying for it, we don't need to go into that detail?
No. But the best thing to do is contact this guy, Ray Dar, directly. Call him, email him. He's very, very helpful. And they also have people there that will help you with the free application. We can help you with it, but they know much more. I mean. Go to them. They'll, they'll really be able to help you. I'm just trying to be your advocate at this point. Make sure you get in the offer if, if you want to. Then we can, we should start talking about the planning process pretty soon too, because the, the big thing that, that FEMA likes is. There's been some effort at public involvement, so it's not just we sit and wait and work something out. We do some outreach meetings and meetings. Deep orange shit or home con, we've made an effort to.
Yeah, we were, we were fortunate not to get hit that bad by Irene. At the other, but, but in the past before that, there's been a number of times when we've lost some major culverts with storms and stuff. And we can show the, the history, which is good. The other thing is.
Also, you have a lot of properties in, that are in the flood zone. One, one thing that you could think about. And, and this really depends on whether you're interested in, whether property owners are interested. If there's a property that's been damaged several times, there's a house, let's say it's been damaged several times. Those people can be bought out if they're willing to buy, if they're willing to sell the land and you're willing to take ownership of the lot and make it do a park or something like that. That is a way of basically keeping, they get, they get their money. And they don't have to keep paying flood insurance and FEMA doesn't have to keep coming in and paying for the damages. It's really called a buyout program. Again, you'd have to have, they have to be willing sellers and you have to be willing to.
We lost major access to actually forest land that we had due to water, high water washed out. And we can show where it all washed out. And we have not fixed that road or even attempted because of the cost and what it is. But it'd be interesting to see what they would do with property around it so we get access or things otherwise, because their property is dropping away too.
Is this yours or ours?
Well, no, it's ours. It's the town, this town.
It's eight hundred acres of land that we can't get to.
Because this is all dropped away. We got, we got pictures showing clearly where it's all dropped away from the water and so forth.
They won't buy vacant land.
No, there's a house there.
Okay, yeah, they'll buy a house.
The house might go away someday because of this, so.
Has it been damaged and flooded?
No, it's gone past it and then curved in, but they have voiced concerns more than once about concerns of where their house might go. Actually, the other house has been damaged, the, the two trailers down.
Down below in the lower section, yeah.
Yeah, it's just that they, they've been fortunate enough just that it's gone around them.
Yeah, well, this, this house is sitting high enough and back just enough the road curved by it. Where it curved, the river's taken it from there, this section. I mean, probably in ten or twenty years, it probably will take the house, but.
Yeah, so.
Or a major, yes.
No, if you ever made, yeah, if we ever got hit like Irene, we would have helped.
Yeah, that would make a difference.
That would have been gone.
Those are so random events, it's hard to, I mean Sandy, if Sandy had gone a different direction.
But the, but the question is, does it help with that sort of stuff? That road?
Well, if it can help you acquire the property that you need, it's not gonna pay for everything.
But it would help us so we could, say we wanted to move the road so it wouldn't be there, so it'd be out of the floodplains, so we wouldn't have to keep repairing it. Would it do that?
They might. I, I can't speak for sure.
I'm thinking of person somewhere else.
That would be something you'd need to talk to Ray. You need, you need to talk to him and see. They're, they, they like to fix things that they don't have to keep coming back and paying. Whether they'll do that or not, that would.
That's worth a question.
Give us the content directly, give them an idea. But if you have culverts for certain, those are.
Yeah.
Those are real projects.
What about Lad Road where the brook comes out beside that? Is there any work that needs to be done there?
As you like, there's, well, Lovino Road has that boiler shell, but I don't really think it's undersized. But the, the.
What about the water, where the water actually comes close to the road itself? Do you need any shoring or any of that?
You can't really alter the stream. I mean, that's, that's a big no-no when it comes to.
Yeah. But that's the sort of stuff I think that they might address because the stream runs so close to the road. If it ever had hot, high water there, it certainly could damage that road.
Did you get any money after Irene for damages or did you?
On a few little small projects.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we lost the levee and some other things, but nothing big, nothing like what the towns around us are. Not even close. But it's, it's.
We do have, I don't know, getting back to saltering the stream. Alta Park is a prime example of Vlad Brook and. The railroad having a problem where the river comes down along the railroad and has to make a ninety to go under the railroad. It backs up the actual drainage from Alta Park in a, a storm event. So the water actually can't get out of the park because the river's coming down. It makes a whirlpool and goes to the culvert and holds it back. And that is a serious issue when we do have a, a quick thaw in the spring or a serious storm event.
That's the culvert that was under the tracks.
And that park has been underwater several times. We've been working with the railroad to keep the culvert clean and to keep the ditches clean. In fact, when you knew this storm was coming, we met at the firehouse and designated a team to get out and make sure all the ditches were clear and open so it wouldn't happen again. And knock on wood, we didn't get a big effect and the ditches were clear. So, and what wasn't, we had cleared.
Well, I don't know. My basic message is there's a source of funds, whether you'll get it or not, I don't know, but you don't wanna like not apply when you could get something, so that's basically why I'm advocating for you.
But we've gotta do this.
Work and its effort, but if, and you may get zero, but you'll definitely get zero if you don't apply.
We got a timeline of the eighteenth to get in by.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Now, they're having a. Did you get my, did, do you get emails from me when I sent, that there was a webinar that's coming up next week? It's on, it's basically on this grant program where you can ask questions.
I think I got that one.
Yeah, I probably didn't. I don't remember. I'm not real good for it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I think I did.
You can, you can tie in on your own computer. We're gonna have it at our office. We're just, I'm just gonna put a screen up and. If you wanna come there, it's, I think it's one o'clock on Tuesday. And that's another part. But I would contact Ray directly, either by email or by phone, and he's a great guy. He will, he will help you.
Now, this.
He'll give you good advice.
Now, this January eighth letter of intent. As for this year, does this, do they do rounds every year or do they?
They've had, they've got a whole bunch of money close to Irene. We've had three rounds so far, which is what makes me worry that you guys haven't been somehow not getting the information. So this is the last round. And so there, there's something, there, the, the word is, is that there aren't enough applications for all the money. So they're, they wanna use up the money because otherwise it just goes back to the feds and that, that's it. Won't go help with Sandy or something like that. But, um, apply because there's money there. It's not like there's, um, there's a lot of people applying for money, but there's a lot of money.
The letter of intent.
There's like fourteen or fifteen million dollars left.
Yeah, the letter of intent then doesn't need to be in full detail or.
Yeah, it's basically saying you intend to apply.
And you tend to apply, do you have to describe what you're applying for? In other words, it'll be these three, it'll be three culverts on Mount Anthony Road, culverts A, B, and C. And, and but other net, you don't need much.
Application process is a little more involved, but again, I would, I would seek their help in terms of putting that together.
Yeah, the applications, we reply, or also include that little, just to see if they would cover that, uh, the bank that got washed out down there for access to that.
You can try. They don't tend to do a lot of flood, well, as you know, the bank and bank can redid their entire river and they, they haven't got any money for that. So they don't tend to wanna get into that. I'm not sure why. I think, my guess is that.
I would.
FEMA probably doesn't wanna get involved with things that may or, may not be a good idea. People like fixing their banks when they, and they might be doing it the wrong way, and they haven't quite adopt, adapted to Vermont, which is pretty far ahead of everybody into the river, river quarter management, so.
Yeah, I would, I would say what we should do.
But you always ask.
The way I would ask for that is it would be that our intent is to abandon that road because the river has taken it. And move the road to a location which will be out of the flood plain. And that's the way, and that's the way I would apply for it. And then at that point, we could go into more detail and say what the cost would be at the time we actually make up the. But I, I would word it the other way because they don't like to play with the river right now.
But if you're moving the road and.
Yeah.
The cost of having to redo that actually move that road if it keeps getting flooded out, that's a.
Yeah, and I think that's a legitimate way of going after it because that's, from the things I've read from FEMA and stuff, that's what they're trying to do. They're doing it on the, the road that washed out. I can't even think of the name of it now, across the, they're moving a whole bunch of sections of it.
Yeah, yeah, they basically just don't wanna keep paying for the same things.
Yeah, and that's basically what we're asking here, is we wanna move it out of the flood plain.
Your Tuesday meeting, where is that?
Our office. I'll resend that tomorrow, make sure you.
I got it right here.
Okay. And you can, you can just link in from your own computer too if you don't wanna come, but you're certainly welcome to come to our office.
And what time of day? One?
One o'clock, Tuesday.
Yeah, one o'clock, Tuesday.
Did I always say one?
Yeah, I can, I got it. How long do you think that's gonna be?
I think it's an hour and an hour and a half. You seem to have all the information. I didn't bring my email with.
No, it doesn't say how long.
Just one, so.
Do you do those things, hour, hour and a half?
Hour and hour and a half, yeah.
Okay. Just setting up time. No, but I, I think, I agree with you. I think the town, if you don't ask, you don't get. And I've said that for a number of years, and I think the real way to do it is, is to ask.
And if you don't get this time, you can ask again next time, but at least you'll be in a position of.
We'll be on the list if we get this in there, so.
Well, I'll speak a little bit about the wastewater. What we found was that they had money, like you're talking about, that they didn't have enough people applying to get. And we were able to write something that allowed us to get more funding. And I think if, you know, I have no trouble with attempting once, go ahead and put the letter of intent in to do with the relocation of the road from the river. But I am more than willing to work on that grant to make that project a little different. So we can get that funding if we can from some agency that has money they wanna give us. The others, I think, are, you know, more in Casey's bailiwick because he knows more about the history of those culverts and things.
And this is a bit of a slow process. It will take them a while or, I mean, basically what happens is the state gets a whole bunch of applications, then they, they then prioritize them. They say this is our priority list to FEMA. FEMA then looks at them and decides which ones, you know, so it's, it goes, it takes a while. It's not, you're not gonna hear it in like a month.
Right.
It's gonna be many months. I, I know that, just to give you an example, I've been working with a town of Woodford where they lost two houses. And we started there, they had to do hazard mitigation, they're same boat, they had to do hazard mitigation plan and the grant. We started, well, about December of two thousand eleven. Those still have not yet been approved. They're still waiting on the, and those are houses that got washed out, so those are priorities, you know, people lost their homes and they wanna try to make those people whole if they can.
Yeah.
But it's a long process. That's longer because there have to be appraisals and all kinds of stuff has to occur to.
It's government, let's be honest. It's government.
Yeah, it's a big, yeah, that's.
It's a lot of government, that's the government. Yeah, there's a lot of.
Yeah, I know, I've been there.
But the, one good thing I think, I think that came, that I saw came out of this is that the, um, the state hired a consulting firm to sit down and help people fill out their applications. And there are people in the joint field office who, they, you know, they, they, they called me and said, well, this town can apply. They applied for something once before, why don't they apply for something again? You know, they were actually looking, they are trying to look out for people.
It's good.
It's slow, but there are people on the other end trying to look out for people. And then we would, we would need to start this hazard mitigation plan, which can take a while itself in itself. So I would need it. Well, you're one team member, I suppose.
Call for some of the information for you.
Yeah, well, that's.
Start the plan anyway.
Yeah, identifying the projects is key. I can't do that. I mean, I, there's a, I can do a lot of the background information, but I, you guys have to set up the priorities of what, what you want to spend money on. It's basically, if you think of it as a cap windstorms, snowstorms, there's some things you really, I haven't figured out what you can do about snow. So if you have good ideas, let me know, but we should, we need to look at it. There, there may be something.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's good.
Well, the water should be good with our culverts and issues we've had losing roads and stuff, so that's.
It's a big plus.
Because we have got some. You know, box culverts put in to alleviate the problems on some of the major roads, but unfortunately, the streams that we're talking about on this are feeding to that. And if they don't get there, it hasn't done as much good, so.
Have you ever had AOT do any hydraulic studies?
Done hydraulic studies on all of them.
So they, so they've given you a size, they, they have an idea what the size would be?
Like, it's like he said, the culverts, two culverts above go into a seventy square foot culvert that crosses North Powder Road. So I've already had the hydraulic, hydraulic studies for both of those.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think we have.
So you know how big they need to be then?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, we have lots of details. We just haven't had the pockets to reach.
And you can probably come up with a cost estimate of what that would.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, when you guys are old and. Somebody, some people are just like not even thinking about this, but that's great. So you could actually say, you go from A to B and it'll cost you X.
Yeah, I think some of this would have been done if we had the money. Just, you know, money is a hard thing to come by.
Well, I think ten years ago, we decided that, you know, we should at least concentrate on the major.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Which we have. We put in, what, three?
Oh, boy, yeah. We started on Skipper Ree when Tom Kelly was road foreman was the first one we put in.
All right.
And then we did the others.
Robert's town's got three on it.
Right, I was thinking of two there, that's right.
White Oaks and this one.
Bottom Road.
Skipper Ree got one. I mean, there's, if you look, there's been a lot of them that's been done. But there's, how many culverts total in our town?
Almost a hundred.
Nice, yeah, that's.
Fair number.
So we're saying seventy-four miles of road. I mean, it's. And we cover that with, what, four people? Three?
Well, we got, we got a part-time.
Part-time on top of it, so, yeah.
Yep, well, while we're on the subject, I guess probably the best thing to do at this point is to. Get a motion to get that letter so that gets out of here by the eighteenth or where it needs to be by the eighteenth. So move.
Give me a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Whoever wants to come sit in our webinar is, or, or, like I said, do it yourself or come to our office, however you wanna do it, you're, you're more than welcome. We're a little bit in disarray. We're reorganizing things.
Yeah, we're always in disarray. It'll work fine.
That's the use to that.
And then if you can authorize starting a hazard mitigation plan, that would be good too. Basically means that at a certain point, approved, they'll work with me and whoever that's, those.
Yeah, we need that before, and we need that before we get the grant.
That lady's gonna be one, because she's really hot to do this.
I'll move to do that too.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Okay, back to our road foreman here.
We'll have more of this stuff at night.
There's more information if you wanna look at it. In the meantime, just go to the Vermont Emergency Management website and you'll see there's a section on hazard mitigation. Planning and hazard mitigation grants. There's more information there, but. But, um, yeah, come on, come on Tuesday and we'll learn some more. Trying to think, is there anybody else we could talk to?
Got him more closer to nighttime, four or five o'clock at night.
Yeah, I, I don't know why they set up that way. They just, but, you know, they're, they're just trying to reach out to whoever can come. I guess they figure since they're doing it via computer, if someone could just be.
Yeah, it should be next week, right? Yeah, fifteenth.
Tuesday.
Fifteenth, yeah.
I'm Michael.
Casey.
Hi, Casey.
Okay.
I'll be printing Jim Henderson on there.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions, anything else I can help you with at this point or?
Well, we're in the road foreman thing, so we got you into this hazard mitigation because of the culverts. I wanted to make sure road foreman was here when we were talking about that because he has all those details that he don't have.
I'm in a hurry to go. I'm just asking if there's any else I can.
Nope, that's, that gets us started in the right direction anyways, and then we got information to go with from there.
Great.
I wonder if any of the culvert replacements we had to put up there on the road or the scenic byway would qualify for some of this stuff.
No, they were undersized. We didn't have any floods out there, so it's kind of, but anyways.
Do you have a, does your town, does the town have a shelter? Do you have a shelter? Red Cross certified shelter or?
School.
Yeah, a school and fire department for backup.
Okay, and but they're Red Cross certified?
Uh, the fire department used to be, wasn't it? The schools got to be because they're generated.
Yeah.
Don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if they've had the Red Cross come down and review and then give them their blessing. I don't know none of that process.
Well, not to take up too much of your time, but it might be worth looking into because, um, basically if, if, if you have a shelter and it's certified by the Red Cross and the Red Cross staffs it. That way, if anything happens, if the building is somehow damaged, they're liable. If you open it and it's damaged and it's not Red Cross, then you're liable. In other words, you're gonna deal with the school system. Now, the Red Cross now has a training program. They have a program where, let's say they can't get here because they're over in Brattleboro. And they, Route nine, oh gee, that gets washed out. Well, they have a program where they will train local volunteers. And those local volunteers then can open the shelter and it will operate as a Red Cross shelter. And they'll provide you with equipment and they'll provide you with cots. I don't know if you have cots or whatever. If you haven't had stuff, they will provide all the stuff for free. It's definitely worth looking into. It doesn't cost anything for the training, doesn't cost anything for any of this stuff, but it's a, it's a program that would then allow the, the shelter to be opened. Under the Red Cross umbrella, protect you, but also means that, that's, that's there. Now, maybe, maybe if you have, I, I just haven't looked at, we have to update your emergency operations plan one of these days, but I haven't looked at that in a while, but I don't remember whether it is or is not. But even if it is, it is, it might be worth, if you have volunteers who are interested and they wanna get trained, then that would be a really good use of it. They, they like to have like ten volunteers because you figure if you're running a shelter. You don't do it twenty-four hours a day, so you have to have replacements.
I believe they have somebody cross people in town.
They're assuming they could get here within three days of.
Because one's on the mature you aren't frequenting.
I think they're attractive. I'll print it out. I'm working on it.
Okay, so, but we might wanna have their, their, this guy named Larry, I forget, it's hard to pronounce his last name, but he'll come and assess the shelter and take a look and, and talk to you about this up here. Should I can look him up with you and then.
Yeah.
It might be worth having him come out, but it's just another thing to think about in terms of, the school has a generator? It's already.
Yes.
Both fire departments, so. See, years ago, when Alta flooded the first time, that's what, seven years ago now probably? Powder Fire Department set up the shelter, but the Red Cross was manning it and feeding there, but I don't know.
And that may still be, that still may be all be in place, but usually they have an agreement and, and it's worth just looking into because. It protects the town, but also, you know, if you have individuals who are interested in volunteering and helping, then this, this is an important thing for them, them to be able to do.
Okay.
And it may be worth, uh, from time to time, just testing out your shelter, you know, just. Do a little exercise where you, you know, you open it and make sure everything's there to, it works and.
Yeah, yeah, we've tested some of the fire departments.
Yeah.
Test them under, test them under live conditions.
Name or? Yeah, we'll tell me.
What was that meeting we just had at the firehouse?
See, you asked me if I had that training. When, when last time I talked to you and I said, yes, we just did it, um.
I can't remember. It's been a while since we talked about that. The holidays erased my memory. Was that emergency management director training or?
Yes, 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 we all had to go there, yeah.
So it's, oh, the four oh two, the, the incident command for.
Yes, incident command, that's the word.
Famous, R I M C.
Yeah, it was a large turnout in the town. That was actually pretty good.
Good.
R I M C.
Well, anyway, I'll send you the information on the shelter stuff. It's worth, worth.
Yes.
Get a hold of him and.
Make sure stuff's up to date and.
That's good.
Did you open your shelter during Irene or did you, did you have, you needed to do that in a while?
Well, we didn't need to. We.
Irene, yeah, the firehouse.
That's right, it was. All right, right, yeah.
Revote. Five families. Rest of them just.
Yeah, there wasn't that much.
One, one thing to think about with your emergency operations plan too, and you maybe have this kind of information, is are there people that are, that you know of that may be in need that you need to go, go, go to them? You know, in other words, are there maybe elderly people or. Handicapped, blind people, you know, that actually need to call them up and having a list like that is, anything that update is a really important thing because you all would know. You know, that actually need to call them up and having a list like that is, and that update is a really important thing, because you all would know. Okay, well, thanks for your time.
Well, thank you very much. You got to earn it early. Thank you again.
Yes, thanks. Okay, Casey, floor is yours.
I guess while speaking of repairing things, uh, Tuesday morning, I called up Caterpillar Technical Assistance. And I gave the serial number of the machine, uh, the guy pulled her up on the screen, all the parts that we put into that machine, since it was new. And every, all the bit of service work that they've ever done to it. He realized we put a pump in it, uh, in oh eight, and he said that, uh, probably wouldn't have went bad if the machine would have got brought down to Caterpillar. They've got a, uh, it's called a hydraulic, uh, I don't know how we call it, uh.
Flush or something?
Well, it's dialysis.
Oh, okay.
Hydraulic dialysis, and I'm not sure exactly how they hook it up, but they bring the machine down there and for two days straight, they let it run and run all the implements and try to get as much of the material out of the hydraulic system as possible. Filters that are around the machines are only ten mic rounds. I'm not sure, the ones that they use are, it goes in the stages to get the, as much of, you never get it all out, he said, but. He says if, uh, that's the only way that, uh, you're ever gonna make a pump last after you've had one fail. And we've had two fails, so that's probably.
Did he say what that costs to do that?
He just said it was two days of labor, uh, of course, the, uh, carton machine down there and bringing it back. And of course, they'll change the filter, they change, uh, I think it's probably a total of fifteen gallons of hydraulic oil. And whatever else they do, there's, of course, we changed the filter that's inside the tank. We took the machine apart, we washed the inside of the hydraulic tank, replaced the front suction hose, replaced the pump. Changed the filter, uh, cleaned the, uh, hydraulic, uh, uh, cooler. And, uh, that's all we can do without taking the machine.
Pistons and stuff.
There's just, he just said that that's the way that they do it, when they get a machine with a bad pump.
So, so any, I'm just wondering if we paid to have something like that done, does that save us from worrying about purchasing another one right away, or where, where are we?
He highly recommends that, uh, that's done, uh, regardless if you're gonna keep the machine or. Because what will happen is the pump that, the original pump they went on it was in oh eight. And I think it was somewhere around seven thousand hours that it went. So that was, you know.
Couple thousand.
Two thousand hours and you're changing the pump again.
Which is gonna happen again.
Yeah, I totally, I just.
This time the tank had pretty good, and this stuff was in the tank. So it made it all about two, and there was, there was some pretty good sized pieces in there.
But you don't know, but you don't have an idea what the cost is?
He didn't tell me the exact cost.
Yeah, cause that was one of the things we were asking for, was we wanted to know what the cost of this was, so we could make some decision.
Would be, uh, I'm not sure what their labor rate down, that would pretty much tell you. And, and they have independent contractors that they use to haul the machines around, so. I mean, I could find out exactly what it costs, but I don't, I didn't, uh.
You don't have a rough, rough, rough estimate from your mind or?
Sixteen hours of labor, or whatever, if it's a hundred dollars an hour. And we're talking, the hydraulic oil is about a hundred and, uh, sixty-five hours a pail. You need three pails of that, you need a hydraulic filter, it's a hundred fifty bucks.
They're talking five grand when you're done.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's going quite that much.
Probably about twenty-five.
Right now, depending on.
Two or three grand?
Yeah, but with your pump and everything, you're talking five.
He's putting a new pump on, right?
Right, a remanufactured pump, and if the core on the pump is rebuildable. It, it could be anywhere, right now we've got set, over seventeen hundred dollars in just parts. As if, if the core's rebuildable, it's five hundred bucks.
So, so between what we've already put in it and what we put in it, then you're closer to what you're saying. And some of that's already been spent though, so, uh, the question is, is do we spend another three thousand dollars or, or estimate around that amount?
I can come up with a closer estimate, it's, it's, I guess it's, uh, he says with the. I didn't know how much stuff was actually in the bottom of the tank, cause the, the tank wasn't out of it. I talked to him, cause it was early in the morning and I wanted to get, get things rolling. And, uh, so that, that amount of stuff in the system, I mean, the hydraulic filter's not gonna get it all out. When you dump the hydraulic filter and it comes out, it's got a goldish tint to it because of the brass.
Well, what I, well, what I see is if, if we can get it sort of work, it, it gives us two options. Either to look like, uh, we talked about before, looking for a good used machine, but it's gonna give us more time to look for that good used machine. If this thing can get fixed and work, or maybe this thing will be it.
He, we pulled it out of the shop at about, uh, oh, must have been two thirty or so, uh, Wednesday afternoon. And he figured we brought it right up there and he used it.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what, tomorrow's gonna be the basic, uh, uh, it'll, it'll determine.
A Saturday's day.
There's no weeks on, right, and what I'll have him do is, uh, I'll see him and I'll have him bring the machine up Monday. Leave it at the shop, we'll take the filter off it, cause I bought two other filters. We'll change the filter, we'll see just how much material it actually grabs, if there's any big stuff in there. And, uh, it's just, you know, he's, when they use it at the transfer station, they only use the bucket just to pick it up to move it. And they use the vacuum just to pack and pick up the outriggers back and forth. They don't do a lot of swinging, our bucket doesn't get used a lot, uh, but, uh.
It'd also be interesting to see what the price is, cause they know what the machine is and what it's worth. They know it's gotta be done to it at this point. If they're, what kind of value the machine actually has toward the purchase.
Yeah, they'll give you a recommendation rather than have to.
I mean, we'll know if we're getting five grand for it, ten grand for it, or kind of trading, or.
I think it's a no-brainer, we fixed the thing for that little bit of money. Yeah, it's already fixed. That's a no-brainer, I mean, we're.
No, it's got a Band-Aid on it right now, it's not fixed.
Yeah, I would say send it over and do, do what this, their guy's recommendation from CAT, I mean.
What I think you're trying to say is, is, you know, you got, uh, uh, they know that we've put two pumps in it, we're gonna get the membrane or get the hydraulic system cleaned out. And like I say, when you give them the serial number, they can trace everything that's been done to that machine since it's been brand new. They know that you changed the, uh, if you bought filters over there, how many filters you bought.
Right.
Or a water pump, or a starter.
Get the history on it.
The radiator's been changed, I mean, everything that's been changed on it that you bought there.
But his, but his recommendation is, is to do this.
Yes.
Find, so, so I'm seeing, and that's what we were asking for, what would the, someone that works on these things professionally in the way of CAT. And if they're saying to do that, I, I agree with Ronnie, I think it's a no-brainer, we should at least do that. It's a three thousand dollar investment by the sound of less. And then we know, then we know, because at that point, they're gonna tell us, hey, look, we did this and it's a piece of crap, or we did this and you're gonna get some use out of it. You know, come on, we're talking about spending what, the, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars when we bought the bid for a new one. And, uh, and, uh, like we said, we might be able to find a good used one instead.
Make a motion, uh, if it's under three grand, have him send it over, and if it's over, come back and, and at least we know then what it's worth for a price.
I'm, I'm, I'm second that motion, that's to do this flush or whatever they call it. If they find other things where they gotta put parts and stuff in it, you know, that.
Well, I'd like to add to that motion, if we still get a figure on it, we don't have to buy nothing.
What's it worth this, you mean?
What's it's worth as a trade-in, so we have everything to work with.
We got the trade-in value of it, uh, in the last, uh, it was seventeen thousand dollars. That's what they offered to give us for the machine originally.
Right, so if we fix it, but, yeah, it's worth the three grand.
Cause we don't fix it, they ain't gonna give us that. We can know it is.
But you don't know, it's worth hearing from them, how much, just for tricks and giggles, what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I have no trouble with the men in my, men in the, the motion I seconded to, uh, do that, to get a quote on what it's worth when it's done.
Cause if you take seventeen grand away from that other one, you know, now you're down into.
You blow a hundred at least.
Which, well, you're, you're in the eighty-something thousand for a new machine.
Yeah, high eighties, but yeah.
Well, it was a hundred and three thousand. Right? So if you take seventeen or something away from that.
Might get a better bid.
Yep, that makes the new machine look.
Might get a better bid if you got a good machine to trade.
You know, you're looking at twenty, twenty-year outlook, fifteen to twenty years.
You ought to get at least twenty years out of a heavy machine, crying out loud.
Well, that's what we got out of this one.
Two years out of his up there. We load more gravel and we'll, we'll load in a lifetime.
Okay, how long we kept the grader before we bought a new one?
This one's twenty years old, folks.
I know, that's why, it's twenty years, it's twenty years.
You know, a hundred grand's a lot of money, but if you're looking at twenty years, that's a whole different picture you're looking at.
Yeah, you don't, it's not a, that's, to me, it's a no-brainer, it's just, uh, again, I think, uh, if we got a chance to fix this, that gives us time to.
It gives us time to think about it and to move on in a procedure that's, that's worthy, rather than this panic buying a, a new machine and throwing the other one away and stuff like that, I can't see that.
I don't think any of us were figuring on throwing it away, that's what the seventeen K is all about.
Well.
So anyways, the motion is to.
I amended it, I didn't hear a second to the.
Okay, with an amended motion.
Mike might want to amend his motion to coincide with what I, I don't know, that's his call.
Want to amend it so it covers.
Getting an estimate.
An estimate and a price of trade-in.
Of what the trade-in value is.
Then my motion to, if it's under three grand.
Yeah.
To ship it down, have it done, and then get an estimate on what it's worth.
Yeah.
Yep, that's true.
Done, done.
Okay.
Okay, with the men, motion amended, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's good. Thanks, Casey, that's good to know. So basically at this point then, it sounds like you didn't have to bring the bucket up? You, you left the bucket down at the other place and you've got your two backhoes up here, or one of them up here, went down there.
First part of all, it was, it went out there, or Chris went out there, uh, Tuesday morning, started the machine up, bucket goes right there.
Oh, the bucket?
Thing moved out of the way, whatever.
So you had two things?
The back, it was still shaking and.
It's the way it works, folks.
Things moved around enough where.
We didn't have to use a loader to pick the bucket, the loader on the, in the backhoe up in order to get it in the shop to pick it up, to pull the covers and stuff off and.
But you could go out three more times and it wouldn't, so it's. Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, but it, but at this point, just so we understand, because I know we talked about swapping those, the buckets at the yard.
Launders at the shop, other backhoe's down there.
Okay, yeah, because we had said to be, switch those, I just wanted to make.
We're gonna do that, but, uh.
But this should help, this should do it.
With the guy at the, at Caterpillar, he says, we'll try this right here first.
Okay, like, well, I just know what the select board had said, that's why.
I know that, uh, you know, it's, it isn't worth nothing, not fixed.
You got it.
You had to mention the hap, try to limit the use and really.
Hey, I'm gonna see him tomorrow and, uh, we're gonna have to. Instead of letting it sit there and run all day long, just, you know, use it, shut it off, and let it sit there and, sparingly until.
Till we can get it over there. You said they gotta have it for three days?
He said it takes two days to do the flushing.
Yeah, so we want to try to get that over early in the week too, so we can get it back in time to use. Yeah, so some scheduling issues there you'll have to deal with.
Have to, well, their shop is, uh, pretty full over there, but they can find that out tomorrow during this.
Anything been happening with the roads? Little snow, ice.
It's muddy now.
Cause tomorrow's supposed to be warmer.
You're ready, got freezing rain coming tomorrow.
Then fifty, right?
Three different channels, they got three different weather reports, so.
Oh, you, you get all the, you get all the road conditions anyways, right? Down below is warm, up high you're frozen.
What is different at my house than it is down here in San?
Yeah, my daughter's finding that out by you.
Well, you got a fifty percent chance it is, and it's fifty percent it ain't, so.
By Saturday morning, you know what happened Friday. All right, we move on.
Anything else exciting?
Good, thank you, thank you.
Okay, the only other thing basically before us is town picnic, I'd like to put a little bit of money in there. Every year we talk about it, one year we actually did it.
Well, you have a budget.
There's gonna be budget then when we do that.
Well, I figured we needed to get an approval out of the board to put it into the.
You're gonna approve the budget, I assume, when you put, put it in the budget.
Okay.
You know.
All right, five months ago there, I just thought that had become before us to, if we were gonna be okay with it.
Well, it's, you're not gonna spend it until after July, right? When do you have that?
August.
August, yeah, so it'll be in next year's budget.
Okay, with that then, we will have to go into a short executive session on hydro lease agreement and a tax appeal that has been settled also.
It's been settled, why can't we do it in the open and just say it's settled?
I guess we can, you know, I just wasn't sure with that.
The other one we probably have to talk about because there's some conflicts, right? Some issues there we gotta talk about. But what, the, once it's been settled, it's legal, it's settled, I mean, it's, depends on the record, I assume. Is all signed off by the attorneys and approved by everybody? Certified, right, it's our copy. This is a court case?
It's only been signed by Peter, so.
Yeah, it's from the court though, right?
Yep. To my understanding, what I'm reading there, everything's been settled.
Yeah, it's basically, uh, don't mind, I gotta read it off, if you want me to. This is to do with Pauling Guttlow versus the Town of Pano on an abatement issue. And basically it says enclosed, please find the appeal, pale, motion for summary judgment along with my certificate of service for the same. So basically they made a summary judgment on it.
There was five, five stipulations on it, four were cited on the front page that were done right, and the fifth one on the back is also cited and resolved.
So that, that's all settled.
Correct, good, that's, one last we have to worry about, legal fees, it's over.
I just got one question, other than that, but it probably should have been added, but. Assuming everybody saw the letter in the paper today, was there a bad judgment in that, release names?
I think the names are already out there, so I don't think it matters anymore. It's, it's been, we've only got one road foreman, we've only got one.
Yeah, that's.
Well, well, it's.
Assistant, so it's, I don't, I don't believe that.
We can bash the press if we wish, uh, but, but in reality, usually you do not discuss personnel names and, and functions and decision-making. Uh, you know, you, you'll get up and you'll say, you know, if you look, the teacher has some issues and whatever, that's what you see. But after a while, it comes out, the names come out. And, and this here, you know, it's been going on, it's been going on for a while.
Yeah, they've been out for quite a while, so this is number.
So it's not like, uh, eventually it wouldn't come out. It's, it's just a matter of taste, I think.
No secrets on that one. Okay. Anything else before we go into an executive session on legal and the hydro lease agreement?
I'm, will we go into hydro lease agreement?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We gotta make a decision when we come out on there?